Good evening, we're going to call and order our school committee meeting this evening. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. And to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, so before we begin this evening, uh, I'm going to call our attention as a group uh, to the fact that we are approaching the sixteenth anniversary of the September eleventh attacks. And I'd like us to take a moment to thank those who keep us safe both at home and abroad and those who gave their lives on that day and in the intervening sixteen years. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with regards to the agenda, I'm going to remove uh executive session for this evening. And I'm going to remove uh approval of vendor warrants under the finance subcommittee report. Does anyone else have additions or subtractions? Good, excellent. Citizen speak? No?
Yes.
Oh, please. Thank you, and if you could just introduce yourselves for the uh or yourself for the viewing audience.
Hi, my name is Noel Vigu, I'm the director for health and physical education for Milton Public Schools. Uh, thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. Um, I'd like to announce um that the Milton Public Schools uh is excited to initiate a district-wide parent speaker series. Uh, this will be for the two thousand seventeen eighteen uh school year. Parent stands for promoting awareness and resources for the emotional nurturing of teens and ideally all students K through twelve. Our goal is to continue to develop and enhance our relationship with the school community and helping to provide families and caregivers skills, knowledge, and resources to support the overall well-being of our students. We can't do this alone and we'd like to acknowledge that the Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital in Milton, the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, the Milton Times, our PTOs at all schools as well as uh a few parents that have reached out and we'd like to thank all of that I just mentioned for their support. Uh, our first presenter that we are excited to announce is Ms. Sarah Ward. She will be presenting next Wednesday, September thirteenth at the Pierce Middle School from seven to nine P M. And she will be discussing how to help your student plan, organize, and manage tasks. Uh, she specializes in executive functioning and will speak to uh basically all students uh K through twelve and what they can do to help to uh set up a homework area, how to organize and and manage their time. Um, and we're real excited to have her and will provide resources uh that evening and a follow-up if any parents can't make it. Uh, would be appropriate to go through the uh the rest of the calendar that we have. We have about six presenters, if that would be okay, presenters. Um, then October nineteenth, Maria Trazi will be coming to present. Um, she'll be at the high school auditorium from seven to nine P M. Uh, Ms. Trazi will be speaking about finding resilience, strategies to produce competent and confident children able to successfully navigate a complicated world. Then on January eighth, uh Rachel Simmons will be speaking about Odd Girl Out, coping with best friends, worst enemies, and everything in between. She'll be coming to the high school auditorium and presenting from six thirty to eight P M. And January thirtieth, this is a comprehensive program called Minding Your Mind. Uh, it's a mental health awareness program that will be presented during the day with the students at the Pierce Middle School. And then that evening, uh, the parents are welcome to attend, but it's also open to the community. Uh, and that'll be on January thirtieth at Pierce Middle School from six thirty to seven thirty P M. February eighth, with a generous generous donation from the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, Dr. Ruth Poty will be presenting Under Construction: What Every Parent Should Know About The Teen-Tween Brain and Substance Use. That will be at the high school auditorium from six thirty to eight P M. And lastly, on April fifth, Michael Thompson will be speaking. His presentation, Raising Cain: Protecting The Emotional Lives Of Boys. That'll be at Pierce Middle School from seven to nine P M. Uh, and that's all. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
If I might, Noel, before you leave, uh, Mr. Vigu is our health P E coordinator and in NADIC he created a series and worked collaboratively with the community. And if you go online, I said, Noel, I think there's a speaker a week. And so Noel surveyed the PTOs, the principals, the administrators, teachers, and uh just joined us last year and already has come up. I think he could have doubled the list and had a speaker a month, but um the generosity of the coalition, B I D Milton, the PTOs, and um we asked if any parents wanted to donate, we'll be recognizing those parents in our blasts. And so he is to be applauded because what we found out at our PTO presence, we were competing against one another. The CPAC would have a presentation that you wanted to go to, but the next night an individual PTO was counting on your attendance. So uh joining all together and Noel prioritized the list, so you were to be applauded. Uh, um, you took it and you did it and uh again, uh, the benefits to the community can't even be listed. We're going to communicate with private and parochial schools and uh the Times is very good to us with the public speaking. A plus.
Thank you. Member Earl.
Yeah, and I just, I do want to echo that um I was at the PTO presence meeting when you were presenting this idea and powling with the PTO leaders leaders um about this concept. And I just do want to commend, I I think someone who was in PTO leadership for many years at the elementary and then especially at the middle, um, I think that the series of speakers that you have acquired, it just, it's it they're spot on because at especially for um, you know, the middle school and high years because as now a high school parent and what what starts in middle school, the kids' schedules get so hectic during these times and that sort of six to nine slot is so busy that it really takes something very interesting and very important for you to put it on that Google Calendar to say, we're gonna go to that. And I and I noticed that if there it was, if there was a powerful um, you know, pertinent speaker to your parenting at that moment in time, we would get really good turnouts. And I think the list of people you have is very impressive and people will really be appreciative and I think there'll be some good turnovers. That on top of the fact that it it can be the district that all, it's not just like you say, a Cunningham or a Pierce event or whatever. So I think it's really smart strategy on on all levels. And again, thank you for um acquiring such a really, you know, notable um group of speakers. I think it's gonna be great, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We can't do this alone, you know, it takes a village. And one of the things that really stuck out to me was the um building a relationship with the the community that it's just not this one-off and done, you drop 'em off and pick 'em up, uh, that we continue to try to work together to to help what's best for our our children. And uh, this is something that I thought was pretty successful in my previous district and uh I thought, you know, we can do it even better here. So I'm excited, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent.
Uh, well, a long-awaited presentation. I'd like to ask to the table uh to join us Lori Stillman, our social-emotional uh facilitator in the district um for the last six months, who's in six months, I think she's put six years' worth of work. And uh so just as introduction, uh, the Milton Women's Club, when they dissolved, they accepted grants. And so we were able to write a grant to the Milton Women's Club and then through a grant through Jackie Morgan and our food service department and a part of a grant uh through DESI, we were able to fund uh the first SEL position in the Milton Public Schools. Um, we posted and no one had more experience, firsthand knowledge, uh, knowledge of current research practices than Lori Stillman. So Lori Stillman uh hit the ground running because her children went to the Milton Public Schools and she's a Milton resident. But the response has been unbelievable from staff and I think the school committee has been waiting and the community, uh, Lori presented to the leadership team on the first day of school, so we've gotten a preview into um what you're going to hear. But she's uh again, given us unbelievable work and now a platform to uh move forward. So welcome Lori and thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I'd actually like to commend all of you for putting SEL at the top of your prioritization list. Um, I think that by doing so and having created this position, we've actually positioned ourselves to take advantage of a number of other opportunities that we wouldn't have um been able to avail ourselves uh with otherwise. So um I would venture to say that we are probably ahead of the curve um compared to other communities across Massachusetts regarding our thinking around social-emotional learning. Tonight, uh, what I'd like to do is first of all, make sure that we're all on the same page around what social-emotional learning is all about. Um, I'd then like to share with you the findings from a needs assessment that I conducted um during the springtime where I interviewed about twenty district leaders uh about what we are actually doing in the field of SEL, but what are some of the gaps and recommendations. And then I'd like to um wrap up by uh discussing with you some of the recommendations for moving forward in the future. So um Superintendent Gormley said something before um to Noel Vigu, she said A plus. And I think that A plus actually is a wonderful metaphor for what social-emotional learning is all about. The A standing for um our basic commitment to uh quality academics and the plus is all of the other things that we do to help foster healthy development in children and help to make them successful. That's really the bottom line of what social-emotional learning is all about. And so when we um talk about SEL, we often talk about the whole child within the whole school environment. And what do we mean by that? What we mean is is that we try and cultivate um the emotional intelligence, the social competence, and the psychological wellness of our children. And we also are concerned with their physical wellness. That's really the whole child uh kind of concept. But we also are con- that is, won't be successful unless we also have a concept of our schools being whole schools, that they're not just places to impart um academic skills in reading, writing, and arithmetic, but they are places that are um considered safe and supportive for our kids, that provide um social and behavioral supports for them, um where we can nurture their um character development. Um, and uh it's a place where we can connect with families um and the community. So that's really what in essence this whole field is about. Now let me say that social-emotional learning is not new and I'm sure that Ms. Rose Marin can um speak to this, which is uh it has really been focused over the last ten or fifteen years on the early years, on pre-K and the early uh elementary grades. And I think that a lot of that is because the thinking has been that if you sort of foster the um emotional regulation and the social skills of kids, then they will be ready and prepared to deal with the academic challenges as they get older. But neuroscience has really developed a lot over the past ten years. And with imaging, um, they have found that uh our brains um actually learn social and emotional skills throughout our lifetime. And these things can actually be taught and reinforced in schools. So the field is really developing very rapidly right now to focus more on the upper grades, the middle schools and the high schools. But it it is a new field and it's really more promising practices than best practices. So we're all in the process of learning around this. But there was a recent meta-analysis in the past year of a number of schools that have really embarked in social-emotional learning well. And what they found was that those schools who did do it well within a whole school and a whole child environment, that they can anticipate that academic achievement will increase by about thirteen percent, um, that faculty have more satisfaction in their jobs, that kids are healthier um and more psychologically grounded, uh, that achievement gaps have been narrowed and um and sort of emotional um issues and behavioral issues tend to lessen. For every dollar that is invested in social-emotional learning, one can expect about a thirteen-dollar return on investment to society because those kids who have strong social-emotional skills tend to have less health problems and so it's less expensive in the healthcare system. They tend to have less mental health problems, so it's less problems in the mental health system. And kids with a strong SEL tend to have lifetime earnings that are significantly higher than those kids who don't. So this is a worthwhile investment for us to be involved in. So let's get real specific about what we're talking about with social-emotional learning competencies. And um some of you may be aware of the Collaborative for So- um Academic Social-Emotional Learning, also known as CASL. They're sort of the national preeminent organization that um is really leading the way around this issue. And you may have seen this wheel. Um, the wheel is sort of visually depicts how we approach the issue. But if you see in the in the center area, in the five colors, those are the five areas of um competencies that we want to focus on in our schools. So if you look at about eleven o'clock um in the wheel and you look at self-awareness, what do we mean by that? What we mean is is that we want to help foster kids to recognize what their own strengths and weaknesses are and be able to act on them. We want them to be able to be aware of their own values and be able to act on them. And we want them to be aware of their inner feelings and be able to cope with them in a productive way. Around social awareness, we want kids to be good citizens and we want them to be able to take perspective of other kids and be able to be empathetic and want to be inclusive and helpful. Those are things that actually can be learned and fostered within a a whole school environment. Around relationship skills, it's interesting, but um employers will say that the one area where s- schools in general are failing is to produce kids who have good relationship skills. And in the twenty-first century economy, it's really important that adults be able to know how to collaborate and innovate together and work out issues together. And employers want us to be working more in that area. Around responsible decision-making, well, um, you know, we uh you did the YRBS, the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey. Um, as you may or may not know, adolescents are risk-takers. And that's because their prefrontal cortex is not totally developed yet. And so they tend to not be as regulated and thoughtful about taking risks. But schools and parents can help kids become better responsible decision-makers by practicing with them, fostering social resistance skills and the like. So that's something that will be important to help address some of the substance use issues and other risk-taking areas. And finally, with self-management, we want with with that prefrontal cortex that hasn't been um developed yet, executive functioning skills are still not developed so that kids um really need support in being able to do planning um and uh time management and the like. And one of the key concepts that are coming out of SEL is called a gro- having a growth mindset. And what that means is that we want kids to have sort of self-efficacy and to feel confident about their ability to learn and push themselves and um be able to succeed even the face of challenges. So these are the major areas um of SEL. Now I also mentioned to you that school climate and school culture are really important. And um, you know, Milton Public Schools does a lot in this area. I don't know whether they would call it social-emotional uh learning or school climate, but certainly there's thought given to it. But, you know, we want to ask our ourselves, do students, faculty, and parents feel appreciated and supported? And and do kids feel like a sense of belonging in their schools? Do they feel safe and do they feel comfortable in their classrooms? Um, are all kids given respect and included no matter who they are? Um, can they feel free to ask for help and get help if they need it? And this is an important concept as well. In a social-emotional learning competent school, we look to kids for solutions for improving their school environment. We try and come up with new ways to get their input on um school improvement opportunities. So just very quickly also, behavioral health or mental health is a very big issue for schools and sort of gets dealt with in the SEL realm. About one in five kids will um be expected to experience a mental health issue in their lifetime. That's a lot of of children. And so um there's been a lot of thinking about this from DESI and actually nationally. And one of the key things to think about is as you design your behavioral health approach, to look at it as a multi-tiered approach. With tier one being, what are we gonna do to support all kids emotionally, no matter who they are? For cure two are, how do we identify those kids who are experiencing problems, either socially or emotionally? And what kinds of special programs will we design for them so they don't end up in tier three, which is crisis mode and needing to be um referred out? And so this is kind of the approach that SEL looks at. And finally, DESI recommends that districts plan for SEL in the following way. First is to build um commitment and awareness across the district, establish a vision and a plan for the district, cultivate SEL not only in kids but in the adults in the system as well, and then to always use data for quality improvement. So what I'd like to do now is basically review with you what the findings were from the needs assessment um and how we're doing around social-emotional learning. And you received the written report and at the end of it, we have a wonderful inventory of all the things that we are doing across the system. And I'm not gonna review all of those. I'm actually gonna focus more on what the needs and deficits are. Um, but I will say that there is a lot of interest um amongst staff and the school community in learning more about SEL. We also have some strong curricula that we're bringing in, we've just brought into the system within the past two years. We have a second steps program in the elementaries and we have um, well, we have the Michigan model and Get Real in the middle school. Um, the high school could use some more focused thinking about how to have student-driven um health education and learning at that level. We also have really strong co-curriculars. And one of the exciting pieces has to do with what Noel talked about here, which is we've paid, uh, we're beginning to pay much more attention to the homeschool connection. So that parent forum is just the perfect example of how to sort of bring parents along um so that they can be more effective advocates for their kids. But we also have this, thanks to you, a funded, very important position, the Family Outreach Liaison, who welcomes all parents and focuses on those who are in need. That's just terrific. We also have a home visiting program at the elementary level. Um, we have lots of wonderful programs and groups at the high school. And I heard consistently that our adjustment counselors and our guidance counselors and our nurses are really high-quality across the system. What I was surprised about was how much um assessments are actually, SEL assessments are actually already taking place. And again, that's only happening in the past year or two. And that includes the YRBS and the YHS, which I'm so glad that the Milton Public Schools um have done and hope that it will be done uh every other year as recommended um on a federal basis. The ESPERT um assessment, uh, the Milton Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition is very uh excited to hear about and um so happy to uh have heard Margaret Gibbons explain it to you. There was recently a be- a behavioral health assessment being done across the school district thanks to a grant written by Dr. Karen Spalding. And there are some school culture and student self-assessment surveys happening at the elementary school, but they're a little random. Um, the other major overall observation is that we really don't have a vertical strategy for thinking about how we do SEL. A K through twelve strategy, just like we think about, what are the outcomes that we want kids to learn around academics? What are the competencies that we want to learn when? And we also um don't do a lot of this practice on a day-to-day level within the classroom. What we have tended to do is think of SEL as almost everybody does who gets into this process, as a siloed kind of effort. And we really, when we get to a more mature phase, we'll want to bring SEL uh practice into all of our disciplines. And so now I'd like to tell you what some of the very top priorities, specific priorities, that were requested. And the first one is professional development. Staff really want to learn more about, in particular, how to um deal with behavioral health crises, school anxiety, trauma, um, self-harm. Those were some of the um topics that they uh said that they'd like to learn more about. They'd like to learn more about assessment tools uh that are used in the field. And I learned that while many faculty are supportive of SEL, there are a number of faculty who feel like it's an add-on to so much that they're already expected to do. And we have to help them appreciate how if this is done right, it can actually make their work easier and better. Behavioral health is a critical need in our system and I'm sure um Ms. White would tell you that it is be- it is a big issue in almost every system. Um, but staff were very clear that we needed to develop and update our protocols and approaches to dealing with behavioral health issues and crises. We need to help parents understand how to deal with their kids. And we need to build community partnerships, because I don't think we take advantage uh as much of um other organizations that can help us in this work. Um, and many staff felt that we do not have sufficient capacity to address our behavioral health needs. There is a lot of appreciation that we built an additional adjustment counselor capacity into the override, but we were so far behind in some ways with the uh student uh counselor ratio that we're still somewhat behind. And um particularly, a a number of our administrators spend so much of their time addressing dysfunctional um, well, pro- families who are having issues and challenges as well as kids that they, it's really taking them away from focusing on the universal strategies for SEL. Around um promoting social relationships, a lot of people talked about recess. You know, recess is a time when most kids learn the skills of working, of being around each other, being inclusive, being respectful. But right now, we don't really have a lot of structured play for our kids and the people who are charged with overseeing uh the playgrounds, for instance, our paraprofessionals are not really trained in the area or properly supervised. And that was a a real need. And also, a lot of staff talked about us needing to be more proactive in doing, in teaching tolerance, rather than being reactive around incidents, trying to be more proactive. Um, we need more in the way of physical education and health education on the elementary level. The American Academy of Pediatrics said we should really be working- The American Academy of Pediatrics said we should really be working on responsible decision-making at the, at very early levels. We're talking about in fourth and fifth grade. Our middle and high school need more attention to social resistance skills. And we really need to bring our community along to provide kids with more activities during the non-school days when kids are hanging out in the woods and drinking and doing drugs. I mean, let's get down to it. So also, you know, we noticed a bit of a deficit in terms of really encouraging more of collaborative learning within the classroom. That is pretty much across the district. Around assessments, while we have done a lot of really good assessments, we need to be more systematic about it. We need to be clear about what issues we want people to learn, kids to learn when. Identify those indicators and then figure out which tools we want to use to measure them. And we want to start experimenting more with school climate and student efficacy assessments as well. So now, based on those findings, here are some of the recommendations. And the ones that you see in red are the ones that came out on the top for the leadership team when I gave them the whole list. But I still think all of them are important. The first one is around district planning. So I, excuse me, originally thought that because we have a lot to do, that it would be useful to have an SEL advisory committee. But then I rethought it and thought, you've already got a health and wellness committee. Why have another committee that deals with many of the same issues? So I would recommend that you expand the role of that committee to become the social, emotional, and physical wellness committee. And perhaps even have a subgroup of people working on the action plan and vision statement. And they can also work on the learning priorities and all the other things that we want to have happen. And make sure, hopefully, that this is tied into your strategic plan. We don't want the strategic plan dealing with, with social emotional learning over here and then having an action plan over here. Let's integrate. Okay? Regarding professional development, it'd be great to have a social emotional learning community. Let's get a survey out and ask staff and parents what they want to learn more about. Let's figure out if we can get some more release time that might be even contractually required. And I'm so pleased to see all that Noel is doing around building student resilience through the parenting program. Around curricula and instruction, let's guide the integration of SEL practice into all disciplines. Let's not just have it in the health education classes. Let's think about how we can creatively bring it into all of our classes. And let's look at our social studies program and think about how civics might be enhanced in the school system. Let's look at our reading selections and see what kinds of SEL themes they have. Let's not just look at literacy issues. That's where character development gets taught. And let's have more student-driven approaches and problem-solving to the findings in our YRBS, where we see that our kids have high levels of depression and using substances. Around behavioral health needs, let's focus on getting some protocols together across the system around behavioral health. Let's start meeting with some community partners who could maybe bolster some of our offerings. Let's think about where it might make sense to bring more clinical staff into the system. Let's train our athletic coaches, because our YRBS showed that the kids at highest risk for substances were our athletes. And that's true, actually, of opioids as well. Let's be conscious and maybe even have a campaign to reduce stigma. Have a positive behavioral health approach as opposed to a disciplinary one. Or at least figure out ways to combine that. And more professional development around behavioral health. Let's increase physical activity and health educational opportunities in the elementaries. That's critical. Let's get staff coordination for that health and wellness committee. I appreciate that the school committee is, has two co-chairs working on this. But if there's going to be a real effort to move SEL agenda along, volunteers aren't going to be able to do it by themselves. We need to have a staff person, I believe, who's going to work closely with the school committee chairs to get that agenda off the ground. And we also, and I know Superintendent Gormley felt, feels very strongly about that, we need to be more intentional about attending to our faculty's social emotional learning needs. Okay, around social responsibility and inclusivity, let's look at structured play. Let's provide training and supervision to our playground aides. Let's look at something like discovering justice and bring more social responsibility curriculum to the system. And the time when there seemed to be a lot of stress around doing social transitions is between fifth and sixth grade, when each of the individual elementary schools are all coming together. And between eighth and ninth grade, this is when new friendships are being developed and exclusionary issues happen. And we can find ways to do that better. Around assessments, let's be a little bit more systematic about what kinds of things that we want to work on and find the tools that will help us measure them. And let's start piloting some school climate and student self-assessment surveys. And let's use all of this for quality improvement. So in conclusion, social emotional learning is part of a well-rounded educational experience. If we do it well, we can improve the life prospects of our students. We can even further narrow the achievement gap. And we can spend less time and money managing behavioral health and emotional issues that are being dealt more on a crisis level as opposed to a proactive prevention level. I think this community can do this well. I've been impressed with all of the support and energy by the leadership here in doing this well. And I recommend, as this field grows rapidly, that we connect with grants and with networks and other professional development opportunities that will come our way. So thank you very much for the opportunity to be your district facilitator. And I really look forward to seeing how the district flourishes in the field.
Thank you. Yes, certainly. Comments from my colleagues?
You've done an enormous amount of work here. And it's kind of overwhelming, the amount that you've been able to accomplish. And first of all, I thank you for doing so. It's really, you've been so detailed in your list of needs and recommendations. And it really gives us a lot to work with going forward. And it's just excellent. Thank you.
One thing I do want to bring to your attention is I developed, this is the cover page, a compendium of information and resources for the Milton Public Schools. This is an eight-page document of curated websites and guidance materials that are just totally up to date. In the past year, all of the new, you know, assessments that are available, the professional organizations that are available, the grants that are available, the curricula that are available. So don't, you don't have to do the research. It's all here for you and it should make it a lot easier for you.
Number one.
Thank you very much for all of your wonderful work. This is a huge amount of information for us to move forward. And a couple of points. One is, I think, your recommendation around the Health and Wellness Committee, possibly expanding to take on SEL as part of its mission, I think is a very smart one. And I think it's something for us to consider as a school committee so that we can kind of focus our efforts accordingly and broaden the scope a little bit of that, of that committee. So I'd love to discuss that more with the committee. And I guess my other question for you, and it seems kind of silly to ask, but are there anything beyond this needs assessment that you want to tell us about or that you've accomplished in your time that you've been here? Because I know you've been very busy.
Well, there are other things besides, you know, the compendium. I worked with Karen McDavid and Dr. Karen Spalding on facilitating and designing their behavioral health retreats, which was very enlightening and helped to inform the needs assessment. I've been asked by Superintendent Gormley and Assistant Superintendent Sheehan if I would take a crack at developing a draft action plan for you guys to consider. So that is in the works. I've written weekly newsletter articles for the superintendents' blast. I've sort of been the keeper of all the professional development opportunities and shooting those out to people. I'm trying to work on developing a sports clinic at the Tucker School to help get more children of color into athletics where they are underrepresented at the high school and to get them interested. I developed a memo for Assistant Superintendent Sheehan on approaches to doing SEL assessments that I recommended. I wrote four grants. Three got funded. One is for the parent, the parent forum that we did. We also funded a social work student to help put a bullying program, a new bullying program in place at the Tucker School. And we recently were notified about another very exciting opportunity, which I'm not privileged to talk about yet, because we have to get an approved press release out. But I'm really excited about that. And I've also worked with Mr. Jett and Mr. Kelly and Mr. Madden in trying to update their chemical awareness program to make it much more relevant to kids. And I just spoke today with Dr. Margie Skier about doing a presentation for students on substance use in the brain. So it's, it's been a very full, full-time.
Please.
Ms. Stillman doesn't give herself enough credit. And once the grant is public, we'll have her make the announcement. But the grant that she wrote and we've been awarded really sets us up for the next two years. It's very forward-thinking, developing a team within the district, best practices across the state. And that last note, working with the high school team, again, ultimately to bring parents and students together, really has been a huge goal of mine. And Lori Stillman went in and worked with the high school team and has made that a reality. So thank you. And you should add to that list that you have brought resources within this town and the surrounding area to the Milton Public Schools that we would have never known or been aware of, that now have partnered with the Milton Public Schools going forward.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm gonna, nope.
I just, I really briefly just want to echo the sentiments of all my other colleagues. And I just, I hope that even to people who are, you know, watching this at home, I know that not all of the parents in the K-12 or the pre-K-12 community, you know, might really be fully aware of the importance of social and emotional learning and, like you say, are as familiar of that it's, you know, taking off and becoming a very sort of, you know, aggressive, aggressive tool that, that all districts in the country, not just in Massachusetts, should be aware of, the benefits of it. And the more research I do, I, I really am eager to, eager to see with all of the information you've given us and the possible work we can do, the benefits that, the outcome that it will, will bring to our district. Because it seems to me that it really is sort of maybe that missing link that, you know, you can do all the academic prep in the world and, you know, whatever. But, you know, if a student is not, you know, emotionally and physically in a good space to learn, then, you know, how much are they really going to achieve? And, and all the help for parents, you know, that, that we're going to give as well. I'm, I'm excited about it. And, yeah, a major thank you for all of the, all of the beginning works that you've done for us. And hopefully, will continue to be able to do for us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm going to echo my colleagues. This is, this is not only a lot of work, but it's very, it's very helpful, very, very helpful work product. And I'm sure that our strategic planning process will appreciate all of this input. I would, my only comments to you and to the superintendent and her team are, with regards to siloing and your discussion about that, I, I hope that if you don't have the opportunity to, at, at least someone in the curriculum review process is aware of that so that when they are reviewing our curriculum, they, they look for opportunities to sort of mitigate against that. And I, I think some aspects of our curriculum, it's easy, but some other aspects, you know, you kind of have to work, to work SEL into certain subject matter. So if we're aware of that, it will help further that goal. Remember why?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I just want to tell you that I think you did an unbelievable job thoroughly enjoying reviewing all of your needs assessments and your recommendations. And have, working in this field in another system, you know, I know that people in my community are very interested in what you're doing here and are asking me a lot of questions. You know, I also think I want to agree with you that even though I think that we ask a lot of our teachers and they have a lot of demands on them in terms of what the children are expected to learn and they feel a lot of pressure. And I think sometimes when you come in with another curriculum, they, you know, they kind of will get a little overwhelmed. But I think that as teachers begin to understand that if you spend some time on this curriculum, everything else goes smooth, more smoothly. And the biggest joy of my job is to go into classrooms and teach a whole lesson. I go in every week to, I think I do four classes. I'd like to do them all. I don't have enough time. I have interns that do some. I have other staff that do some. And once you get going, the kids love it, the teachers get it, appreciate it, and everybody works so much more collaboratively. So I, I love what you did. This is great. Thank you.
Well, I think you're spot on by that point for teachers.
And I also think it helps reduce the stigma of going to see the school counselor, because the kids know you now, because you're in the classroom and you're talking to them about things.
Yes. Yes. And that's one of the things that our adjustment counselors, you know, lamented about, which is that they're spending so much time on behavioral health crises and they would love to be able to spend more proactive time in the classroom, just as you described.
And I tell you, I have to guard that time like a hawk. Every time people are looking to refer another student, I will say, well, no, that's not, it's not available. Because I don't want to give that up, because I know how important it is. But it's also a lot of fun to do a whole class lesson with the little ones and have them get excited. Like, one third-grade class used to applaud when I walked in the room. I was just, oh, my God, you know, it was so funny. So, anyway.
Number one.
So Lori presented to the Health and Wellness Committee back in June. And it was wonderful. And I'm glad that finally you had a chance to present to the whole school committee. These are just some random thoughts I have as a school, like the other head of, thinking about just that, there's a lot of, there's a wealth of information here that, so when we talked, I wasn't able to go to the strategic planning meeting this morning, but we talked a lot about sort of aligning all the different resources that we have and all the different works that different people have been doing to sort of make it a cohesive plan. And there's a lot of thought in this, in the work that Lori presented us about the financial implications of some of the suggestions that she's making. So increasing physical activity and health opportunities in elementary school. How do you do that? How do you increase behavioral, like, how do you increase the staff? So thinking long-term about the plan and thinking about the financial, the strategic, the planning financially, district-wide for those things. What resource can we use that won't cost any additional money? But thinking about how all of that aligns vertically, horizontally, circularly, however you want to think about it. I mean, there's a lot of information here that we sort of have to figure out a way to bring together and then think about ways we can support it financially to make it work for the whole system. Just, there's a lot of good stuff, just that whole thing about the elementary health opportunities and teaching students about health education at the elementary level, plus more physical activity. That's critical. I think that there's a lot of information for, for the, for the strategic planning committee as well. But it's really excellent work.
And this is, I'm just throwing this out as a parent of two high schoolers. You know, I know that the school has that block period that's used for, you know, a lot of different things, but mostly even when I think about anxiety and stress, it's a good thing that, you know, starting early on, it's used, even in ninth grade about thinking about, you know, what do you, where do you want to go, what are your interests in college and things like that? And not that that shouldn't be a part of it, but I know time and when are you going to do it and, you know, staffing to do it, but it's, it's overseen by guidance. And I'm just thinking it might be a, just to think about like a, a good block of time where more SEL, you know, learning and like something that Betty spoke about, like having them come, you know, to block periods more often to sort of speak about social emotional learning from time to time and not have it all be about, as we've talked about, maybe GPAs and academic achievement and, you know, it's just a time that's already set in people's schedules and, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud about it, but it's, it's something that I think, you know, and, and maybe it can balance both out. You can have the SEL and you can also work on, yeah, group guidance, but, you know, it's called group guidance, but it's, it's not as, I think, much focused on SEL situations in group guidance as it is on maybe academic achievement. So, just something, though.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very briefly, our kindergarten and preschoolers have joined us. So preschool through grade 12, we had a smooth beginning. Somebody said luck and I said, it has nothing to do with luck. I said, everyone worked hard this summer. And I have to recognize at the table Glenn Pavlichek, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Glenn Pavlichek, and Jane Barrett. Name a street, name a number on a street. Glenn can tell you where the bus stop is and what time it will stop. And for those school people, they understand you have to get here and you have to go home. And that's important to parents, all parents, parents who are at home, parents who are guardians who are working. And so I have to tell you that part of our plan was to identify, we have 10 buses, we identified eight staff members, and one of them said to me, not to worry, Mary, the work that I didn't do while I was on the bus for you for the last four days, every morning and afternoon doing three routes, I did every night. And so I have to recognize Debbie Fedraki, Tom Phelan, Jackie Ma, Linda Stefanik, Maura Middleton, Mary Shapiro, A.J. Millenson, and Maureen Butler responded to our call the night before school started. They didn't have direct classes and they rode the buses on two routes every morning and every afternoon for all four schools and then reported back to central office the time of the stops, how we could adjust them, the criteria, you may wonder, they all, they didn't have classrooms, but they were all Milton residents. It was of no value to me to have somebody riding the buses not knowing that the bus went, could have saved time. So I have to thank you, Glenn. The number of calls compared to last year and the response from the parents, and I doubled back today on 12 parents and said, were you taken care of? And they enthusiastically wrote, Dr. Pavlichek and Ms. Barrett took care of me. So, a few final applause. Hello. I want to recognize the selectmen's office, especially Emily Martin, and the Milton Auxiliary Fire Department, BID Milton called us and asked us what we were going to do for those residents and especially children in the Houston area. And our town hall from four to seven yesterday, today, and tomorrow are accepting, you can go on the front of our website and find out the kind of items. They don't want you to drop anything off except between four and seven. And I saw Glenn Pavlichek and I saw Emily Martin today. They're partnering with other communities. The trucks are actually leaving Milton to drive to Houston. And Emily Martin and the selectmen's office took this on and it's very, very moving, the work. And our own Charlie Roach volunteered yesterday afternoon and she said to see the citizens and the residents and the children of Milton coming forward with everything from diapers to food donations was, spoke about the town of Milton. So tomorrow afternoon from four to seven will be your last chance through this Milton, Milton Helps for Houston. The Parents Speaker Bureau I was going to address, but Noel did a much better job. And in closing, I would encourage parents and guardians to go to their school's website and we're going to have a presentation for you on our new portal and our new website, but these open houses are coming up. And for everyone to check, I know our principals will communicate with you multiple times that all the open houses are, have been scheduled and the back-to-school nights. And when I interview candidates, I always say, in the town of Milton, if you contact a parent, within the day, the parent will get back to you. And I'm also proud to say we have over 90%, probably closer to 98% attendance at our open houses. And there are candidates who come here who can't report that about other school districts. But these open houses are a wonderful way for, I call it the good news meeting, for our parents and guardians to connect with their children's teachers. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. And I believe we have to appoint our school physician?
Oh, excuse me. I'm very pleased to tell you, first, very briefly, many of you will smile. Glenn, help me, I, Dr., no, that was, Dr. Benachi. First, Dr. Benachi, who is a neighbor of Milton High School, served for years. Every public school district has to have a pediatrician on record who works with the head nurse on plans for students. The doctor will come in and do our fifth grade classes at the end of their fifth grade experience. And I've been a part of many calls to the physician on call for the district, asking for their guidance in cases. Dr. Benachi retired and Dr. Madora took over. Dr. Madora's husband is a history teacher at Milton High School, and we've had a wonderful relationship, it seems like yesterday, but it was four or five years, with Dr. Madora. And so I am very proud to put in front of you, and I picked this up, Ms. Everhart, in our policy meeting, that the school committee appoints the school physician. And so I'm proud to tell you that this is a Tucker parent, Dr. Patricia Gugliotta, and she's also a neighbor of Dr. Pavlichek's and mine here in Milton. She has children at the Tucker and she readily responded. She has experience being the physician on call at, at camps and other schools over the years. And Margaret Gibbons was so enthusiastic in her first meeting with her. So I'm looking for school committee approval for this appointment. And I've included her resume in here for you, which you can see, we are very fortunate to have this talented pediatrician, this gifted pediatrician as a parent, living in our community and willing to be an advisor in, in this important position for us.
So I'll move approval, or rather, I'll move that we approve the appointment of Dr. Patricia Gugliotta for school physician in Milton Public Schools, 2017, 2018 school year, July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. Second? All in favor? Unanimous? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Chair's report, you have the edited, updated schedule in front of you with our, I believe it was September and October dates moved around. I have yet to fill in the subcommittee reports, which I will do in the next week. And you will see a, another version of this with expected reported dates for our, our various subcommittees and, and other responsibilities. Finance Subcommittee?
I thought you knocked it off the agenda. We, but I'm happy to give my report, which is that the Finance Subcommittee has not met since the last school committee meeting and therefore we have no report.
Wonderful. All right. Well, that leaves time for policy.
Okay, so everyone should have two policies in their little packets. BBA and BBB. And you can see that these two policies relate to the school committee. So just to update everyone, the policy committee, which consists of myself and Member Morella and Member Rosemarin, we have been working on recommended review of policies from the Massachusetts Association for School Committees. And we, we have just been dividing them up. We started with the policies that pertain to school committee, to meetings, to procedures, so that we would be most up to date in those areas since they pertain to our biweekly meetings, uh, bimonthly meetings, sorry, biweekly, could you imagine? Okay. So if you just look at them, the, the BBA is School Committee Powers and Duties and BBB is School Committee Membership and Term of Office. And Member Rosemarin worked to look at these and we sort of blue-lined them as opposed to red-line them. And you can look and see what they are. And we are just having a first reading this evening. One is blue copy, one is without the changes. The highlights really, we didn't, Eda, if there's any you want to jump in, we didn't change very much for BBA. You can see the changes that we made, we just sort of made some wording changes to them. And added some recommended wording for, that came from Massachusetts Association for School Committees. And then we added this section at the bottom that you see, Personnel Matters.
So my only comment would be, in the, in the past, there's been discussion about whether we have a supervisory role for the individuals that, that are pointed at our vote. This, this seems to clarify that with that last sentence, which I think is helpful. I, I don't, I don't know if you want to go further and, and indicate that, you know, specifically that we are not, we, the school committee, are not reviewed in the, their, these individuals' performance review, with the exception of the superintendent. But I, I think this language helps to, certainly helps to clarify an issue that we've run into in the past. And I'm not, I'm not saying I, I need that, I'm, I'm just...
No, you're right. And that's why Member Rosemarin recommended that we add this section that, that the, the Association added that we recommend. It sort of clarifies that particular issue surrounding the responsibilities of the school committee versus the responsibilities of the superintendent and how those two sort of intersect and where they intersect. So we, we appoint those on the recommendation of the superintendent, but we are not involved in any way, shape, or form in evaluating, assessing, or anything like that. That's strictly the superintendent's job. We are only responsible for the superintendent. And I think if everyone agrees that that makes the perfect sense.
Yes.
Right? Okay. Anything else about BBA? And then BBB is just School Committee Membership and Terms of Office. And then if you look at the blue line, the blue edited copy, it says School Committee Membership Qualifications, Oath of Office. And it's just a little bit more detailed in that regard.
Right. And, and that blue section that's added in there also came from MAS C language and it addresses the sort of updated expectations around the Ethics Commission and Open Meeting Law and Conflict of Interest, those types of issues that we're all responsible for being informed about.
One of the things that we discussed at policy was that, so you have to do the ethics training online every two years. So if you're in your second year of school committee, you have to redo the training online and submit the certificate as outlined in the policy. So that's up to you, these two memberships.
Thank you.
So those are the initial readings and I, I guess we will do at our next meeting, we will approve them. We will bring to you, it is our hope to bring two more. We, we had a, there was another policy we had hoped to bring tonight. It was actually on subcommittees and advisory committees of school committees. And it, we got a little tangled up in the language. So we decided since that we would revisit that one, we, we had a little more time to think about it. We will bring that. And then there'll be some other ones coming up that talk about just the meetings and about, you know, citizen speak and about, you know, other things, agendas. So I think they're very helpful. I, I find it helpful. I hope that you all find it as helpful, as we do.
As, as you, as you work your way through that policy, I, I, as the chair, and I think the committee as a whole, would, I think, appreciate any fruits of that discussion as related to our current subcommittee structure and whether certain subcommittees should be, you know, task forces or, some should be collapsed or some should be expanded. So I need, please, please bring us...
Right. And that's sort of, that's sort of where we got, sort of, I don't want to say stuck us, but sort of, in the sense that we're just trying to figure that piece out. Because there are things that pertain to, as Member Rosemarin just said, about open meeting laws, when school committee members are part of a committee and all of that, all of that. So, and then, so, yeah, that's sort of where we got stuck.
Good. Great. Well, thank you. Thank you to the Policy Subcommittee, Strategic Planning.
Well, I'll just give you a brief update. A member of our Strategic Planning Committee, Dr. Karen Spalding, presented about the progress that the Strategic Planning Committee has been, of their efforts that have taken place over the past year to bring the leadership team up to date and, on the efforts of the committee. She met with them late August. And the first course of action that, that we're taking is looking at updating our vision statement for the district. And there have been a number of items that were generated by the Strategic Planning Committee. And Dr. Spalding reviewed all of those and had the leadership team prioritize those items that were most important to them. They got to each pick three that were most important to them, to identify what were the priorities for them to include in the vision statement. And then Dr. Spalding and Elaine McNeil Germay will work together out of that prioritization to draft a first pass at a vision statement that will then be circulated broadly to gain input and feedback and, and hopefully be able to move that forward to bring back to the school committee sometime in October for, for approval. So we're hoping, we, we've actually scheduled our next meeting. We had a meeting this morning and our next meeting is scheduled three weeks from now because we really want to keep things moving along at a good pace. And the other area that we're working on is an area that we're looking at in terms of initiatives. And I think the challenge for the Strategic Planning Committee this year is that it, it started out a little bit out of sync with the school committee's goal-setting process. And what our goal is for next year is for the Strategic Planning Committee to then, at the end of its work sometime in the spring, to actually provide guidance for the school committee in, in developing its goals, rather than being kind of after the fact as, as it sort of is right now. But what, things that, initiatives that have been identified are very consistent with the school committee goals, which, which are wonderful. And what we discussed this morning is that we, rather than duplicate efforts in, say, task forces or advisory groups that are already in existence with efforts in the Strategic Planning Committee, that we would start out by having liaisons from the Strategic Planning Committee attend a meeting or two of, of these different task forces to then bring back to the Strategic Planning Committee to help formulate more strategic direction. And sometimes the groups that are working on, on these efforts are so immersed in implementing initiatives that it's, it's hard to step out of that and think into the future in terms of planning. So, so that's our, our direction. We had... So, so that's our, our direction. We had some volunteers, but the areas that we're looking at are technology, cultural competence, district data dashboard, social emotional learning, curriculum and instruction, and inclusion. So, those are the areas and we'll have more for you on that at a later date.
Excellent. Transportation?
Yeah, I don't, it'll be, it'll be brief, more, it's more of housekeeping stuff to report on that. We have, we've set our, all of our dates for the year. Our first official meeting, though, is not until Monday, the eighteenth. And we've got all of our representatives from our schools in place except for, I'm going to shout this out to, for Pierce and Tucker. We still need reps from those two schools, so if anyone's watching this and thinks they would like to represent Pierce or the Tucker on transportation.
What is, what is the rough schedule of your meetings?
It's once a month, so it's roughly, give or take, depending on holidays or what have you. It's roughly the third Monday from six thirty, probably six thirty to eight, once a month. So, it's not too trying and if you're interested, you can either contact me, esphrell@miltonps.org, or you can reach out to your school principal and chit chat with them and they can forward me your in, information. So, we've got the dates in place. We've got a new Mass Dot outreach coordinator this year. His name is Moss Lynch. I've only emailed with him, but I'm hoping that he will definitely be able to attend the first meeting. And we, we plan to have a busy year in place. We're going to, you know, look at a bunch of different issues. We're still going to work on the Glover issues. That's a, a big topic that maybe we're going to try to continue to vet and analyze and work with the town on and see what the outcome for that can be. And I also have reached out to, again, our new Director of Transportation, Jane Barrett, about putting our safety, safety patrol program in place, again, earlier in the year. I know that former Transportation Director Jake Smith worked on the applications and asked for those to come in at the end of the year so that decisions could be made early on, so we're just getting all that started. And I'm going to speak with Moss about kicking off the Walk for School Program that we do, which usually happens first week in October. But I'll have a little bit more to report on after we all gather and meet on the eighteenth. The only other thing I was, was wondering, and again, it's only been four days, but I was wondering if Dr. Pavlichek could maybe speak a little bit, how, how the crosswalk situation has been going for four days at the Cunningham and Colacott.
We did the first two days with only temporary lines on the street because the, the line drawing wasn't done until this weekend.
Right.
Now that the line drawing's there, I think it's a little more clear where people are supposed to be. There are flashing beacons at the Fuller and Century Lane crosswalks, not in place fully yet. So, DPW's, Fuller's is, Century's not yet. So, we'll see how those, what, what effect those have, once those are fully operational. We've had a reasonable police presence the first two mornings that we were there, trying to encourage people to use crosswalks. And that seemed to go reasonably well, although the end of the day was a little more chaotic than the morning as people were taking their children home, but I think people will learn, you know, especially now that the, there are better signage and so forth. We're still looking at, you know, some, you know, no left turn signs into the Cunningham, Colacott driveway and so forth. So, there's a few more pieces of the puzzle to fit into place.
Right, and so, I'm just, just to speak to that, so, I'm very much with the Colacott and Cunningham reps, you know, going to ask them, you know, for, putting it on the agenda and asking for their feedback about, you know, how they feel that's working and also reach out to Principal Concanon and Redden. I think that, just something I want to state publicly, like I just hope that the parents will have patience and work with us. I mean, we're, we're definitely, as a school committee, I mean, I'm not a school committee, as a district, school district, you know, we, we want to continue to tweak this. We work with the police department and the DPW to make it work for everyone, to make it safe. I just think that education needs to happen on all fronts, the parents, us, and we'll continue to fine tune it so that the whole walking and exiting and crossing streets and gathering your children will be, you know, safety is our main concern. Traffic, it is traffic flow and helping to deal with congestion, but it's going to take the, you know, even the townspeople, it's going to take the drivers, the walkers, what have you, the police and the DPW all to sort of work together to continue to, you know, finesse this. I think it can work, but it's, it's, it's a big change in a lot of areas and it's a little overwhelming, I could tell. I was there first day in the morning anyway. But, but we are working on it and we'll continue to fine tune, so I ask for everyone's patience and cooperation in the process. That's all I have.
Excellent. Old Business, so, this doesn't really go anywhere else, so I'm going to put it here, the timestamps on the agenda. If people have feedback, if they needed more time or less time for various areas, please, please give it to me as we put together the agenda for next week. And that segues into next week's agenda items. Anything specifically?
Yeah, we.
We're not meeting.
Not, not next week, but next, yeah, next week. I hope we're not meeting next week.
We're all going to be at the Sauerwood.
Next meeting.
The Sauerwood presentation is next Wednesday, you know, on executive functioning, that's why we're not going to have it.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, we're going to be at that.
So, on that meeting, this will be pending the closeout of the seventeen and Dr. Pavlichek and the business office being able to get eighteen budget line items done. So, we have, we had a meeting at town hall today, Dr. Pavlichek and I met with the leadership at town hall. So, we do think, correct, that we'll have a budget calendar and we are working with our chairperson, Craig Head, about the line items. And the capital request, we were querying when that meeting at town hall is going to be. And so, you're our rep on that, so that's really pending when that meeting is, to bring that to us. And we're going to give you, we're set up a meeting as of today to give you an update at eighteen through twenty-two with Bill Ritchie and Bob Patterson.
Okay.
To prepare that for you.
Good. And, excellent. Is, if Health and Wellness meets in the interim, I would love to hear back from them and their thoughts about.
Right, so Health and Wellness meets at the end of September. I don't, it won't be, that's a good question, actually. I'm sort of out of the thinking about.
Well, at your next meeting, discuss your expanded, your possible expanded title.
I'll, I'll have to sort of talk to, to everyone about that. I think it's the twenty, it's twenty nine.
Yeah.
I think it's the twenty nine, that's what I have on my calendar, okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't have it wrong, okay. So, we, we'll plan that, Dr. Don, you for like that first meeting in October to update everyone. And I'll need some more feedback from, I mean, Laura's on the committee, I hope she's staying on the committee. I'm not going anywhere. And then, okay.
All right, citizens speak?
And we'll have policy hopefully on the twenty seventh, just so you, yeah, sorry about that.
Citizens speak, nobody's here, wonderful, then I'll move to adjourn. All in favor? Unanimous, wonderful, adjourned, thank you.